All right, I'm going to call to order the January 8th, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
As we gather this evening to conduct the business of our community, let us, as always, strive to be the best versions of ourselves. In these challenging and divisive times, let us remember, let us represent the best of our city by exemplifying empathy, open-mindedness, patience, vision, inclusion, thoughtfulness, and compassion. May we express our differences respectfully, assume good intent, and be ever mindful of the fact that we are all here together for the same reason. We are all deeply personally committed to fostering a strong, healthy community for current and future generations. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this brings us to item number four tonight, public comment. A few things on public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. And now is a time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. Public comment is the only time tonight to address the City Commission on agenda items because there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. If you wish to speak tonight, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, and then come up to the podium. For the record, we ask for your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to five minutes or less, and there's a timer at the podium there to help you with your time. If you do not wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us up here via email, phone, whatever works best for you to let us know what you're thinking and what your comments are. Please note that the City Commission won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper City Department if the matter is not scheduled on our agenda this evening. Our city manager is also taking notes and will look into matters as needed, and I can tell you, looking over, he does take pretty copious notes and follows up on issues. So with that, who's first? Yes, sir, on the aisle, right there, gray sweatshirt. Nope, one more, the vest. Sorry, Mr. Skinner. I guess when you came, your sweatshirt looks gray too, man. And his doesn't even have a sweatshirt, so, look, I got it. You're next, Mr. Skinner.
Good evening. My name is Dan Rose, D-A-N-R-O-S-E, and my address is 1876 Cambridge, Berkeley, Michigan. Esteemed members of the committee, Stagecrafters is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit community theater. We've made our home in the historic Baldwin Theater here in Royal Oak since 1984. With the exception of a handful of paid positions that run the business side of our organization, everything that happens at Stagecrafters happens through the goodwill of our volunteers. It was the same goodwill that in 1994, a mere 10 years after taking control of the Baldwin Theater, that allowed us to pay off our mortgage by digging deep into our own pockets and with the help of matching debt forgiveness from Citizens Bank. Through this determination, we gained ownership of the historic Royal Oak landmark that just years earlier's only foreseeable future was a date with a wrecking ball. The selflessness of our volunteers is legendary, not just for our own organization but for the city of Royal Oak as well. We sing at your holiday functions, volunteer to work your parades and festivals. Even on a poor ticket sales year, our work brings well over 20,000 people into this city. These very same people shop our streets before the shows and frequent our restaurants and bars afterwards. It is our casts and the quality of our productions, possible again only through the continued selflessness of our volunteers, that draw people to Royal Oak that would not be here otherwise. People from Down River, out towards Ann Arbor, or up by Flint, areas with their own thriving arts and downtown business communities, hometown communities that are hungry to keep their residents' entertainment dollars at home but can't. Those dollars come here because we bring those people here. I am saddened that one of the benefits, one of the few benefits, we can offer our volunteers in exchange for their endless hours of support, a reduced parking fee, is now in danger of being revoked. On average, I am at the theater four days a week, and that is on top of my full-time day job. Mathematically, that averages out to be 208 trips to the theater in a year. When I multiply that by the 24 years I've been a stage crafter and think about the parking fees involved, I can't help but picture my friend and past mayor Jim Ellison swimming around in a huge Scrooge McDuckian-type vault full of the quarters I spent 20 years putting into this city's parking meters during his tenure. And I am not alone in this spend. I am one of many stage crafters on this multi-day-a-week and multi-year-in-a-lifetime schedule. People who join Stagecrafters stay stage crafters, working tirelessly till they put us in the ground. Perhaps if I were working a paying job here in Royal Oak, I would be more understanding to this being the price of doing business in your fair city. But I am not. I do what I do for free, as has every other stage crafter for the past 62 years of our organization's existence. I ask respectfully that you please give serious consideration to how change, how this change is going to affect our institution, our ability to hold or generate new volunteers, and your city's outreach before you accept the parking subcommittee's recommendation to revoke it. I would love to stay and talk longer, but we have a show opening next week, and I am needed at the theater. Thank you for your consideration of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Who's next, Mr. Skinner?
May I pass something out, please?
Sure, you can hand it to the clerk. She'll pass it down to us.
Hello, my name is Mike Skinner. I live at 130 East Sunnybrook, Royal Oak, Michigan. The property that is missing lots of bushes and supporter of trees. I want to take this first day of your meetings here in 2018 to congratulate you guys that you have done such a super job of listening to the people. When I hear Mr. Dubach and the mayor's invocation and instructions before a meeting, it talks about passion and listening to people and hearing what they say. And I just have to think to myself that there's 69 people that signed a petition that said they didn't want sidewalks. How many people signed a petition or came to you that said that they wanted sidewalks with us? I bet you it's very few. And you, Mr. Johnson, what a Christmas present you gave to all of us.
Mr. Skinner, I have to remind you not to write comments specifically at individuals.
The city manager in the city was very unkind in delivering a, you know, a Christmas present to my friends and neighbors on the 23rd, that you see a picture of, on the 23rd cruise that were put together by you guys. This group came out and decimated one of our friends and neighbors' trees. And I think about these trees like you think about your pets or your home in Detroit where you have a big, beautiful tree, or your home here in Royal Oak, just like your pet. And these people had their kids build treehouses in those. They've had their pets grow up. There's a lot of stories around them. And you took the opportunity on December 23rd to come out and serve a message, and I think it's disgraceful. I'm embarrassed for you guys. I've never said that before. I do not think you serve this community well. I do not think you listen, as I've said before. And I've talked and I begged here before this happened that we get it back in front of the new commission. And I received a text from a member up there that there's two votes, but a third vote was given several months ago in order, so it could have been three, and it could have been on here, and you could have saved us some stuff. I don't know why these sidewalks are so important to you. They do nothing for our tax bill. They do nothing for our citizens. They don't make a walkable city. And I find it appalling and just disgusting that you guys have taken this action. And we have brought it to court, and you may think that you've won, but there's a jurisdictional challenge right there. There isn't a ruling on whether this is right or wrong. And you might have won, but you've hurt our neighborhoods, you've hurt our friends, you've hurt our family, and I am appalled and disgusted by it, and I want you to know that. And I'm going to be watching everything. I think that you guys need to step up and listen to us and stop the general idea that you guys know better than us, and listen to the two new commissioners and find out a way to get them to be able to put people, put things on the agenda so they can be spoken in public and not made in back rooms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
I second it.
Ladies and gentlemen, as it relates to the clapping, I know we've been a little lax on it lately, but we have a long agenda to get through most nights, and it often discourages other people with dissenting opinions as well. So we want to be respectful of, not us, but everybody in the room and in the audience, okay? So we appreciate if you can, you know, this is a public meeting, you are part of this meeting. Who's next? Yes, sir, on the aisle.
My name is John Romo. I live at 806 Catawba in Royal Oak. Brief point, a number of cities and towns in the state have done environmental sustainability studies. I know Dearborn, Hazel Park, Grand Rapids, others have completed them or are doing them. I think, I don't know what kind of discussion you've had here, but I think it's something, if you haven't had anything, that should be taken up. As we know, we're having a lot of crazy weather. We've had it here, it's been around the country, it's, I don't think it's going away. And this is a way of, a study can lead to reducing our carbon footprint, maybe curbing water runoff, but I think, you know, just preparing for changes that we're seeing, sort of an insurance program. And so in that sense, it's a win-win. I think potentially could save money for the city if we begin to initiate something like this. So I just encourage you, if it hasn't started, to look into this and maybe talk to other towns that are already doing it. And I think it would go towards making Royal Oak the kind of place that, you know, we're proud of, and that's why people move here, and make it a better place. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Romo. Yes, ma'am, in the back here, had your hand up? Yes. Yes.
Mayor and city commissioners, my name is Margaret Cope. I live at 538 Mount Vernon. I have come before previous city commissions in the past on, over the proposed sidewalks, specifically over on Custer, where I resided at the corner of Mount Vernon for a little over 45 years. Some of you were members of that past city commission and heard the impacted citizens. Residents of the impacted areas specifically voiced their objections and concerns, some with great passion. Each area had individual and specific issues, one of the reasons we were all granted exemptions in the past. The concerns were valid, particularly in light of what was being discussed within the city, the placement of rain gardens to control flooding and the loss of trees. The need, our concerns were not listened to, and longstanding past exemptions were voided, and there was no compromise. We were dismissed for questioning a city want versus an actual need. We were criticized for being poor citizens when some objected to being handed an $8,000 bill for a city project that would benefit all citizens but was only being paid for by a few. A project over which we had no say over the chosen contractor saw no bids and were given no explanation for how these charges were determined in light of the actual cost to the city. We were chastised for not being concerned over safety. We were ignored when questions were asked over the validity of putting concrete down in flood-prone areas when the city was spending money to put rain gardens to control flooding in other areas. We were told only scrub trees and bushes would be taken down. In the end, this turned out to be a blatant lie. We chose to take legal action. The circuit court filed an injunction to stop work, all work related to the sidewalks. When that injunction was lifted, apparently over the question of whether the suit had been filed in the appropriate arena, the city appeared unable to wait and cut down trees and remove shrubs specifically along Washington. This started three days before Christmas in the dead of winter with snow on the ground and almost sub-zero power temperatures. This was not, this was not a necessity, but it was done and explained as being trimming of the wires. This can't be, what was done can't be defined as trimming when the trees were actually totally removed. While the city has the right and obligations to maintain city property, I can only review the, I can only view this as a retaliatory move towards residents who dared to question the city. We, the taxpayers, had a right to question your actions and decisions and did it in a lawful, respectful manner. You showed us nothing but disrespect in return. I am outdone by this attitude and behavior. Dismiss me however you wish, but citizens have the right to question and the decisions and actions you take. A move toward clearing trees and shrubs before the legalest, before the legalities were settled, citizens were notified, and during a time when contact with anyone within this city was very limited showed, that blatantly displays what is currently wrong in this city. The city commission, the city continues to do whatever they want to do and expect the citizens to sit back, accept it, and pay for it, and this has got to stop. Thank you.
Ms. Cope. Mr. Weyrung.
I don't know if the DDA recommendations that are on the agenda are for action or just to be heard, but if you're going to take any action tonight, I ask you to consider them as a first reading, so you can have at least a second, maybe a third reading while the public vents its frustration at the price increases you're asking for. We're not Birmingham, and we don't have Birmingham's money. And you actually do drive people out of downtown, especially residents who don't want to pay the money for, that you're asking. I'll stick to the two new decks at this point, but it seems to me that the $5 after $5 fee needs some adjustment. And I did send you an email about that, and nobody replied. That's usual, I guess. But the, you're basically telling people, unless you really want to make a financial commitment to come to Royal Oak, don't come. The fee affects, well, there was a lawsuit about, about the merchants and restaurants along Main Street, and we've lost two restaurants, I'll have you know, including Endi Amos, which is a class place. And it seems to me there's things you can do to solve this, or at least ameliorate this problem. First thing is, you need to strike a deal with the, well, probably the treasurer's office and the restaurant owners that if they wish to offer a rebate on the bill for the, for the $5, or part of it is more likely, that they would give their patrons $5 off and, or $2 off, or $2.50 or whatever. And they would be given in return a barcoded pass good for the day, which they would hand in at the deck. And they would, the parking company would take the money off what the person pays, and the money goes, then the money is paid by the restaurant. In other words, it's a loss leader, something that you offer as a benefit to the people who are coming there. Peaking House being a perfect example. If you don't have to pay $5 to make a pickup, you can probably going to keep some of the people that otherwise are going to say it's just too much. And the parking company, I'm sure, can arrange something. You're always talking about all these things that we're supposed to do with, with all these new phones and everything. Well, this is a, should be a very simple thing. Another question, of course, is the $2, the two-hour free parking, which I'm glad to see is going to continue. But what if I come in at 4:30? At 5 o'clock, $5? That doesn't seem right. Unless I'm wrong, I could ask, I can't, I can't say his name, but the city manager could ask him, do I get two hours, or do I get an hour and then I have to pay as soon as the clock turns over? So that's something I think should be asked. And particularly, I'm talking about the library. You go to the library, and you don't go there for 10 minutes or 15 minutes. You go there for hours sometimes, both people with children and people who just want to do research or read. There's a lot of people using their computers in the evening. But if you have to pay $5 to do it, essentially, you're going to, you might as well close the library at 5 o'clock. And I think you need to do something about that. Now, I brought this up to a former library director and was told that, well, we can't afford to pay $5. Now, the merchants would be, would be repaying the money that wasn't collected from the patrons because they'd be getting, they'd be getting a bill from the city once a month. But library patrons aren't going to do that, of course. So I think this is something that needs to be part of your public discussion, and therefore, whatever action you're taking tonight should not be the final action. You should talk it over and maybe talk it over again. Because if you don't, eventually, people are going to say, well, this is the town that wants to take us. And I use an expression, milch cow. A milch cow is a cow that is grown for milk. Well, it's also grown to be milked. And that's more or less what the city is doing when they start raising prices, and the gentleman from Stagecrafters being a perfect example. They, they're the ones that are a place where you get money from, and we don't need that. We need public policy. And therefore, I'm asking you to have a second or a third reading on this thing and have public comments before each so that you can eventually have a town, town that people want to come to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weyrung. Mr. Schwegel.
Good evening, mayor and city commission. My name is Stephen Schwegel, 607 East LaSalle, and this is my wife Judy. And we're speaking in tandem, so we may go slightly over five minutes, so I ask that you allow us to extra.
Well, we do have a lot of people here to speak tonight, so if you can keep it to five minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Do the best we can. First, I would like to thank everyone who has attended these meetings and continues to support our efforts for the church to obtain a much-deserved LED messaging sign. In December, there were positive and supportive comments here by other residents enforcing the need for a new sign for the church. One mentioned how our church is more like a community center as well as a place of worship. We have approximately 130 self-help group meetings with 600 members that pass through our doors monthly, including AAN, ALANON, Debtors Anonymous, and these meetings are ongoing seven days a week. Without the opportunity to meet there, they would have very little choice nor funds to go elsewhere, and without a sign to promote, we cannot reach out to those in need. This also applies to community groups as well. We have a Boy Scout troop, a homeschooling group for children, and a very large classic car group, all meeting at Good Shepherd. We sponsor our Beacon of Hope food pantry, supplying food to needy families. The church belongs to TFAAP, the federally-funded emergency food assistance program that helps supplement low-income citizens, including the elderly. We have a new modern service on Sundays called Spirit of Fire, a newly-formed praise band event starting soon, appropriately-named Grub Jam, which is Lutheran hospitality, guitars, drums, and good food. The current sign is obsolete for all these purposes, and while requiring daily changes to accommodate all the goodwill and group needs, it is impossible due to the age and limited characters of the sign and cold temperatures. We feel that the improper area assignment unreasonably prevents us from using our church in a way it has always been intended, and that is to serve our community and to grow our congregation. Many who need our services have no access to the internet, cell phones, or other communication methods, and rely on visual messages such as signs or word of mouth for information.
In addition to the above groups, Good Shepherd reaches out, can you hear me? Sorry. Reaches out worldwide to help with hunger, schooling, and other ministries such as The Quilters, who made over 80 quilts that were sent to Lutheran World Relief to be distributed worldwide. Our Giving Tree supplies mittens and hats to foster children that are outaged or cannot be placed and is part of Lutheran social services. Our Prayer Shaw Ministry knits shawls which are then blessed and given to help comfort those in need, the terminally ill, or those suffering the loss of a loved one. They also knit infant blankets that are sent to hospitals for the baby's first trip home, and they recently delivered 46 bereavement blankets for stillborn babies to Royal Oak Beaumont Hospital. This past year, they sent out 60 sets of scarves and hats for other children in need. We help support our little compassion child in Tanzania, Jettie, who is seven years old and works with her mother to help support their family by making beds in their village. We send her Christmas and birthday gifts, and will continue to sponsor her until she is 18. With our Beacon of Hope food pantry this holiday season, we gave out 60 turkeys for Thanksgiving, and we volunteer at the welcome-in on Christmas Day to help supply meals for the needy. We contribute to Living Water Ministries that sponsor camping for children in the U.S. and also to Samaritas, a nonprofit organization in Michigan that helps with foster care for children and senior living. Our service ministry organized a crop walk this past year. The proceeds went to World Hunger, and they created 100 backpacks this past fall filled with much-needed school supplies, sending them to other countries to children. We donate to the Lutheran World Relief, Operation Christmas Child, where funds are sent all over the world to children in need. Locally, we are an active member of the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce, paying for this privilege, and we supply welcome bags to new residents of Royal Oak. All this just scratches the surface of what the good, our dedicated congregation can do.
As for residential neighbors, those expressing an opinion say they have no problem with the church installing a new LED sign. On the Nextdoor website, residents are mainly confused, some angered, as to why the church has been denied the new sign. I'm going to skip that, we won't have time. As a church that is cutting unnecessary expenditures, we do feel the second $300 we paid for being reheard by the planning commission, then promptly denied again, was unnecessary and unfair, since we met all criteria for the city's own hardship variance and felt penalized on what seemed to be an error on the area two assignments. We felt as though we were baited by the planning commission to come back.
Mr. Schwegel, I'm going to need you to finish up in about 10 seconds.
I got 30 seconds.
10 seconds. Thanks.
Well, in finishing, we feel a refund of the second $300 would be a kind and responsible gesture to our church and a reasonable request in light of all our efforts for satisfying the variance requirements.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Schwegel. Yes, sir. In the tie.
Well, good evening, mayor, city commissioners. My name is Vince Torita, and I am a resident of New Baltimore, but spend a whole lot of my time at 415 South Lafayette, which is the home of the Baldwin Theater and Stagecrafters. And as you heard our colleague earlier talk, we're here to make a comment about the parking. You know, Stagecrafters has been part of the Royal Oak family for 32 years now. We've enjoyed entertaining many of the people of the city of Royal Oak and, of course, all the other surrounding metro Detroit areas that we bring in to, you know, solicit all the many businesses, of course, the restaurants and all that here in Royal Oak. I don't think a lot of you have met our executive director, and that's what I'd like to do right now, is introduce you to Suzanne Wiggins, who is our new executive director, and she will give comment for the 300 members of Stagecrafters.
Good evening. As you've heard, Stagecrafters is a nonprofit composed of over or nearly 300 volunteer members. The historic Baldwin Theater was not only purchased but painstakingly renovated by these volunteers in 1985. These are hard-working, dedicated individuals who in most cases work full-time jobs during the day and then donate thousands of community service hours in the evenings and on weekends to create the outstanding productions that we present each year. Stagecrafters has long been considered the most outstanding community theater in southeast Michigan. This is evidenced by the many awards we receive. In 2017 alone, Stagecrafters was voted the best community theater by Our Magazine, the best place for live local theater by Metro Times, and we just recently received 10 of the 26 2017 Broadway World Detroit Awards. Our outstanding reputation and quality draws nearly 30,000 people a year to see Stagecrafter productions. Approximately 75% of our audience members dine and drink in downtown Royal Oak prior to or following attending a performance, generating economic benefits for downtown businesses. The great majority of these individuals are not Royal Oak residents, but people who come to Royal Oak to see our shows and then spend their money downtown. Stagecrafters cannot operate its organization or generate economic benefits for Royal Oak businesses without our volunteers. Raising the cost of their parking rate, an increase of 200%, will negatively impact these volunteers who come to build our sets, sew costumes, rehearse shows, and maintain our historic building, more than it will positively impact the city's revenue stream. Our volunteers are parking on weeknights and weekends during the day, which are not high-demand parking hours. So on behalf of Stagecrafters and its 300 volunteers... So on behalf of Stagecrafters and its 300 volunteer members, I strongly encourage the Commission to vote no to increase the Stagecrafters' flat rate from $1 to $3, as well as voting no on the proposed discontinuation of special discounts for Stagecrafters, a valued nonprofit that brings reputation and economic benefit to the city of Royal Oak. And as Mr. Rose said earlier, we're needed at the theater, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Making it out. Mr. Wolf.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. It occurred to me... Now, I wanted to address one thing, the asininity... Two things. The asininity of the addressing of raising parking fees after the disconstruction of the parking structure. Why couldn't have this been brought up months ago, before or during the construction of the parking structure? Why? Because, and even your city manager said it was going to happen, that there would be an increase, months ago, six, eight months ago. That's just really goes to the heart of the matter. Now, I want to remind me, just hit me, a library is more than just a building. It's a center for everyone in the city. It's a center for your kids, your children. It's a center to do research. It's a place to have meetings. I've got an idea. Why not move the library or build a library on the grounds of near the Menager Senior Center? There, you'd have free parking. The students would have access to the library after school immediately. And everyone would love to have free parking, because when you go to a library, the last thing you want to worry about is feeding a meter. And I'd like you to take that suggestion seriously. You see, this city has sold out to special interests, including bars, a long time ago. We all know that. That's why the parking structure is going up. We need offices like we need a hole in the head. Toronto, for 35 years, has mandated that any time an office building goes up, that 10% of it be residential. There's a good reason for this. They want daytime traffic, foot traffic. And you only get that from residents, not from temporary office workers who can't afford to eat. Because in a recent article, it's been published that the gap between restaurant food and supermarket food has never been wider. And people in droves are no longer eating lunch downtowns, in downtowns across America. You need to do your research, people. You need to treat people in the city better. I'm just shocked you called me so quickly, because I was depending on being called last. Another thing is, I want to bring up the no-bid contract thing. Headline, Fiori, Rizzo, unofficial meeting in Royal Oak bar, no-bid contract. It appears to me that not all no-bid contracts are signs of corruption, but a vast majority of corruption involves no-bid contracts. Whenever anyone hears no-bid contract, doesn't it raise a flag out there? I think it would, because that's visible. And if you can permit that, the next thing you know, why not permit the filming of passing of envelopes? You know, I mean, it's getting outrageous, because we're surrounded by a sea of corruption. And to think that Royal Oak is immune to it is absolutely ridiculous. And when you bring up the fact that we haven't had a change in parking fees since 2010, when was the last time we had a change in city manager? You know, we need to rotate. We need to change the oil. We need to check the engine of this city and make sure it's running right. Without it, you're just banging your head against a wall. And to depend on one person, one manager, to handle everything is absolutely ridiculous. And that's why I am pushing for a full-time city mayor who can, who's a resident of the city. The manager would be subservient to the mayor. The manager would stick to administration, not to city planning, nothing else. And we'd have a police chief that doesn't have to wear many hats. He can just be the police chief. We'd have people that will do the job they're assigned to do, instead of running around trying to do everybody else's job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Who's next? Is that Ms. Goodwin back there?
Happy New Year. I first want to compliment you on revisiting the sign ordinance for Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. I think that's a great move and good governance. Anything we can do to support such a great community citizen benefits the city as a whole. So thank you for looking into that. I'm here to speak on item 12, tonight's Commission agenda regarding appointments, Commission appointments. I believe appointments to city subcommittees are merit-based and not based on political party, fan clubs, or campaign support. But I have to ask, is there no room for debate or disagreement in the city any longer? How can you shut out good volunteers who have demonstrated commitment and hard work over time because you disagree with their stance on certain issues? Are we all supposed to walk in lockstep with one another? Not in the United States. If speech is a problem, then let's talk about it when it really becomes a problem. Critiquing, disagreeing, or criticizing is a liberty we should value. It is protected under the First Amendment. Carol Hennessy, who is being denied reappointment to the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and Rick Karlowsky, who is being denied reappointment to the Historical Commission, have exhibited their constitutionally-protected right to free speech to disagree with some of the policies and recent events that came about because of city commission decisions. In a respectful manner, I have never heard either one of them disrespect this body or threaten or intimidate anybody. But we should draw the line at intimidation, threats, and violence. Yes, adults are the biggest bullies of all. I think you need to take a look, if you haven't already, at an appointed official's public comment about a senior citizen on an elected official's Facebook page. It seems the senior citizen, an avid city commission participant, was talking during the elected official's time at public comment at the October 23, 2017 City Commission meeting. Subsequently, the elected official posted a public apology for losing his temper on his Facebook page, and the appointed official responded with the following, and I am replacing the name with senior citizen, and I will have a copy for the city clerk. And I quote, "I think you handled it well. I would have beat the senior citizen within an inch of his life. Who is he, anyway? He has never contributed anything positive to the city. Someone told me the senior citizen comes to the commission meetings because nobody else in Royal Oak will let him in their establishments. Not only is it threatening, it's slanderous. The city commission is getting ready to reappoint this person to the Zoning Board of Appeals tonight, and I find this disturbing, especially given the removal of volunteers like Carol Hennessy from the Memorial Day Parade Committee and Rick Karlowsky from the Historical Commission. In any kind of official capacity, we're held to a higher standard. As a city, we're better than this. A resident without profit motive like this senior citizen contributes by giving input at public comment. He or she may get on your nerves. You may not like the criticism, but it goes with the territory. I know I'm bugging all of you tonight by being here. The senior in question has also contributed productive information. If you want to correct behavior, a violent threat is not the way to do it. To award someone with an appointment who has the will and the mind to post such a horrendous comment, among other things, is just wrong. The appointed official's comment, in my opinion, amounts to elder abuse, an unfortunate phenomenon experienced by one in 10 seniors in our country. Among the most common forms of elder abuse are verbal assaults, intimidation, humiliation, threats, insults, harassment, and treating senior citizens like children. Further, I believe had the subject of the elected official's Facebook post not been a senior citizen, but had been a younger person with its title, status, such as developer or attorney, this appointed official would have never posted such a humiliating threat. He wouldn't have had the nerve. This is all about principle. I'm not here to defend any one person. I'm here about principle, not personalities. I'm not here to promote any one person. But it's principle. Please do the right thing. If you are concerned about Facebook posts and speech, let's start with violent, intimidating speech. And let's continue to keep the city and its subcommittees diverse with protected speech, ideas, and thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you.
You're out of order, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, you're out of order. Okay? The community's meeting, okay? We ask you to be respectful of everybody here, not just us up here, okay? All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am. I see on the aisle there. Yes. The lighting isn't so good back there, so I struggle sometimes.
First off, I have a hand. My name's Laurie Churchill. I live at 1426 Hickory Avenue. And I'm here just as a reminder about our February 10 open house regarding the rats. Residents are the solution. It's going to be a family-friendly, community workshop, how to humanely prevent and control rats. It's going to be at the Senior Center, I believe they... How do you say that? Street Mary's? I don't know how to say that. What is it?
Mary's.
Mary's? Okay. By the Royal Oak High School. Mariah's.
Three different ways of saying it.
And it's by the high school. Okay? It's going to be February 10, from 12 to 3:00. And it's going to be a fun thing. I'm actually getting excited about it, because we like to feed the birds. And probably about last summer, I looked out the window without my glasses, and I'm looking, and I thought, gosh, that looks like kind of a funny bird. So I went and got my glasses, and sure enough, it was a rat. So my husband was back in the den in his recliner, and it takes a lot to get him moving out of that recliner. And I said, Roger, I think there's a rat out there. Boom! He jumped out of his seat. So I would like to continue to feed the birds and know the right way to do it. And I think this is going to be a fun thing. It's family-oriented, and we're going to have face painting. And we're going to have someone there, professionals, who know a lot about the subjects, various subjects. And I've learned a lot about rats, and they're actually very intelligent. So anyway, I just wanted to remind everyone and hope to see you there.
Thank you, Ms. Churchill.
Uh-huh.
All right. Who's next? Dr. Anderson?
Good evening, Mayor Fournier and City Commissioners. I'm Dr. Wallace Anderson. That's Wallace with an I-S and Anderson with an S-E-N, please. And I live at 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. I have two disparate points related to one topic. Our house is in an area designated in the master plan as low-density. Lots are mostly 80 to 100 feet wide and 250 feet deep. My husband was out this morning at 5:30 a.m. with the snow blower to clear the 100 feet of public sidewalk in front of our house. We know there is no ordinance that requires cleaning our sidewalks. I have been paying attention to the city commission debates about it. But ordinance or not, we would clear the walks, because it's part of being a good citizen and a homeowner. And we've always done it. I've been paying attention to your talk about supporting seniors aging in place. I'm 70. Soren's 71. We're in the traditional fixed-income category. Adding 250 feet of concrete sidewalk along our Washington property line is a burden, both the initial approximately $9,000 outlay and, more importantly, the ongoing maintenance. Either Soren uses a snow blower for an additional sidewalk two and a half times longer than the one he already does, or we hire somebody to do it for us. Either will make it more difficult to remain in the house we've lived in and loved for over 35 years. And three of the houses on Washington, between Mount Vernon and Lexington, are owned by seniors. My second concern is that, and people have mentioned this already, in the week before Christmas, city contractors killed seven mature silver maple trees on Washington, between Mount Vernon and Lexington. The stems of the four that had been completely cut down by December 28 reveal that these trees were whole. They were not hollow, and they were not trees dying from inside. I have a picture on my USB. I was hoping to be able to show you of that, but there was no hollowness. I've heard a fair amount of dissing these mature silver maples, derogatorily calling them swamp maples, for example. So considering the negative way these maples have been described by especially the city, I tried to figure out why any tree would be considered so bad. And I couldn't think of a single tree species... I like trees. I'm a tree hugger. So I couldn't think of a single species that, in the abstract, I would call is a bad or undesirable tree. Defining that had to be, then, from the context, either perhaps location, perhaps the age in terms of the tree's expected lifespan. It's true, those maples were old, likely close to 100 years, given when our subdivision was platted. And they had lost some limbs, but many of them were still grand old trees, healthy and trimmed to accommodate power lines. I looked up on Google. It says the silver maple lifespan is 130 to 150 years. So that isn't terribly old if they were 100 years. These trees' value for wildlife was immense. We'd sit on our front porch after dark in the summer and listen to the screech owls twitter and the tree frogs sing. The trees housed numerous year-round birds, woodpeckers especially. At our Suet Theater, we had red bellies, downies, and harrys, as well as multitudes of chickadees, titmice, and nuthatches. Who knows how many birds died because their homes were destroyed in the winter? Nothing can be done, of course, now, about the loss of these trees' value as tree canopy, home for wildlife, privacy screening, and aesthetics. But the negative environmental impact of hundreds of feet of new concrete sidewalk can still be avoided. I request that the Commission reopen the requests we made last spring for exceptions to installing new sidewalks where none have ever been. Review the master plan's call for walkability with an accurate understanding of what urban planners mean by walkability. Replacing masses of natural greenery with concrete sidewalks in a low-density subdivision does not enhance walkability.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Who's next? Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Sorenson, with an S-E-N. I live at 2814 Bamalet Road. I also am a member of Stagecrafters, a longtime member, 42-plus years. I go back to when they were a small community theater group in Claussen. I was involved with the consideration and the purchase of the Baldwin Theater. I was also heavily involved in the restoration work of the Baldwin Theater. Fact is, one of the pictures of the collage in our lobby is a picture of me up near the ceiling, working. As I say, I've been a volunteer with the group for over 42 years. And when we were first here, of course, we had the parking meters across the street, and we always kept running across the street to feed the meters and all that stuff. Then we finally got the parking structure built, which is very nice for us and for our patrons. And it's very convenient having the rates that we have as volunteers. And when I saw that they were going to be increasing the rates, or proposing an increase in the rates, that really offended me because of the fact that I'm volunteer, I'm on fixed income, and now I would have to pay a lot more to go down and do volunteer work. I don't think it's right. I also think that we would lose a lot of our people who try out for shows and people who work on... Other people who work on it as volunteers. Therefore, I wish you would consider not going through with this proposed rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Is that Ms. Harrison I see back there?
Laura Harrison, 2729 Trafford Road. I could talk about a whole bunch of things, but I'll limit myself to one thing only, and that's parking. I was involved in parking probably three days after I opened my business, which is almost 35 years ago. The ex-mayor over there, that young lady who's busy doing whatever she's doing...
I'm pouring water, so I don't cough.
She put me on the Downtown Parking Committee. The committee I was on... Oh, man, did I learn a lot. The committee I was on helped to build the structure that is behind McDonald's. They hadn't had a new parking structure in downtown since, I think, oh, probably... They hadn't had a new parking structure in downtown since I think, oh, probably before Moses was born. So anyhow, we built a new structure. So I stayed involved in parking in downtown area. And really, really, people, you do not understand the tentacles of parking. You've got parking, and then you've got parking for businesses, and you've got parking for restaurants, and you've got parking for retail, and you've got parking for this and parking for that. The Stagecrafters parking and all that other stuff. So I'm going to stick to retail because that's my community. I think what you need to do is go back and look at this parking redo that you're doing. And one area, and I've said this thousands of times, retail customers is a proven fact that if you go to a retail store, probably 99% of them will be in that store no longer than 10 or 15 minutes. They don't need to have to park in a structure unless they're going to do mall-type shopping. Well, there's no mall-type shopping around here. I think what you should do is go back to the way the meters were on the street when I first opened my business. They were one-hour meters. The owners of the businesses and their employees were not allowed to use the on-street parking at all. They had to park where, in wherever a structure was, all right? And the customers were allowed space to park. Now, just before Christmas, I ran down here to go to Herman's Bakery's. I had to get, you know, my husband's favorite cake, you know, fruitcake, couldn't even think of the word. And I actually found one parking spot on the street. I went, I knew what I wanted, ran around the corner, went to the bakery, got what I wanted, talked to the people there for five minutes, got out. I'd put one quarter in the meter. That's all I needed. Don't put long-term parking on the street. You don't have that many retail-type businesses down here. And you should insist that the office people use the structures, period, end of sentence, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Yes, sir.
John Bagel, 2913 Maplewood Avenue. I have been a member of Stagecraft for about 26 years and I'm on disability, on a fixed income, and I can't afford to pay parking for more right now for Stagecraft, for buying the tickets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that wishes to speak this evening? Yes, sir, here.
Gary Yurich, 328 East Sunnybrook Drive in Royal Oak. Forty-three years in my home. And when I went down Washington, my heart sank. It seems that there has been some things that have gone on over the past year here regarding the sidewalk issue and many other issues. So I've come to give you some advice. Yes, from a 63-year-old man who owns three different businesses, who deals with hundreds of people, who's worked all over the United States. I'd like to give you some advice. And it comes from another businessman who, back in the 1930s, decided to take over a company because he was asked to and that company was in bankruptcy. And his name was Herbert Taylor. And Herbert willingly took over this company. And for months, he prayed to the Lord to give him a vision of a mission statement for his employees, of which were 400 employees. In the mission statement the Lord finally put on his heart, he refined down to four sentences. And most of you know the Rotary Club? And the four sentences are this: Everyone in his company had to abide by the four-way test. The first sentence is, is it the truth? The second sentence is, is it fair to all concerned? The third sentence, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And the fourth sentence, will it be beneficial to all concerned? And so this man had a business that was 400 grand in debt. His employees all agreed to this process of taking the four-way test and putting it into action. And wouldn't you know, the very next day, one of his salespeople came in and said, we could have a deal for $200,000 if we cut out our distributor. And they pulled out the four-way test. Would it have been fair to cut out the distributor? And they said, no. So they abided by the four-way test. And within a year and a half, they had $2 million in the bank. These are great guiding principles to live by. That makes it fair for everyone involved. And so I come to you and I say this, for your education, you can look it up, look up the Rotary Club. I might see some of you there. I've been invited a couple of times to attend. And that's their guiding principle on every piece of business that they do. The four-way test. On the second note, it was devastating. I mean, what happened on Washington should have never happened. For what purpose? So a few people could walk on a sidewalk when there's not even a street there? It's a dirt road? And to think that if I, I just feel, my heart goes out to that lady that lives on the corner that I met of Lexington in Washington, because she had a nice, closed-in, beautiful, like up-north backyard, and now it's all cut down. For what purpose are you doing this? How does it edify anyone? How does it benefit anyone? Even the people that walk down there are sickened by what they see today. So I don't know how you can change this process. The legal issue, I'm not sure is done yet, but I would say this to you. Take into consideration, does it build goodwill for the people of the city of Royal Oak? Does it build good friendships for the people of the city of Royal Oak?
Dr. Yurich, I need you to finish up in about five seconds.
Okay. Is it beneficial to the people that live in these homes?
Thank you, Mr. Yurich.
You're welcome, Mayor.
All right, who's next tonight?
Mr. Wolf, you're up.
Out of order. Let me remind you, you had five minutes to say your piece up here and say what you want to say. Now is everybody else's time, okay? Please don't make me remind you again. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, Brandon Collo, 600 East Hudson Avenue. So I'm here tonight as a library board member. I wanted to give you a report on what we have going on. Many people know that between Christmas and New Year's, libraries close for about a week. We had an unfortunate water event that caused a minor bit of flooding in the library. We had some really good professionals come in, they did a great job cleaning it up, saving a lot of books. We lost about 300 books, but those are all in the process of being replaced. So thank you to the city, the finance department, everyone who really helped us get through that. We did not lose those working days, however. We were able to utilize that time to redo our media center. When you walk in, there's a whole new way to get DVDs, magazines, newspapers, where you try to make it really more accessible to people. We also increased the lighting in the youth activity room. It's no longer mood lighting when you go downstairs to get your children's library books. You could see, the kids can see what they're actually picking out, so we're pretty excited about that. Even more exciting, though, we have coming up on January 22nd, from 7:00 to 8:30, the 19th Annual Preschool Open House. We're teaming up with another great community asset, the Farmers Market, right across the street. We rehelled this event last year. We have over 40 preschools coming out to give us information on what they have to offer. It's a highly successful event. I know my family went there when we were looking for preschools. That's how, really helped us decide. So we look forward to welcoming the community. Once again, that's January 22nd from 7:00 to 8:30. So unless you have any questions about the library right now, I would like to say something in my role as a citizen, I see tonight we have a lot of people being appointed to boards and committees. I see a lot of new names and I'm excited for them. I love everything I do on the library board. I'm really excited that we're getting more and more people involved in new and expanding roles in our city. So congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Collo.
Okay. No questions about the library?
Any questions for Mr. Collo in his capacity as a library board trustee? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone.
See a hand in the back?
What color is it?
I couldn't tell, Mr. Collo was in front of you. It looks blue, though.
God, you're always having me attention.
All right, I think I got this one right. There is a little spot of light back there, blue it looks like it is.
The light does shine back there.
I thought it was your halo.
There's no single halo in Royal Oak, I've checked. And if there was, I wouldn't have it. Good evening, fair mayor and commission. Joel Hirscher on 4509 Hampton Boulevard. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your new family member.
Thank you.
If you only pretend to now own your house, you're a servant. I hope you understand that. For those of you who aren't aware, Mr. De Buck did offer to give his life to service of a cat, so we'll see reports later. Just touching, sadly, I'm going to be all over the place tonight because while I did come prepared as usual, we're deviating here. I would like to point out a few things that came up this evening on the subject of rats. And forgive me if it sounds familiar in a speech I've done before. In less than two months, a group of more than eight folks have taken a task to heart, donated time and substantial money of their own with no intent to recoup this money. So therefore, you might take that as a donation to the city of sorts, to engage a local populace on a subject that has thus far seemingly been ignored. We have welcomed neighborhood community groups from as far as Ferndale and Troy, yes, our neighbors, we have shown what welcoming truly does stand for. We have attendance and support of local businesses, small businesses, just not one Saturday in our fair city. With no city promotion or support thus far, but we sure hope to see it soon, we will be engaging this, as you know, the date has been supplied to you. No task force was necessary, no advisory panel was necessary, no consultants, we just took it to heart. So therefore, I think you can agree, residents are indeed the solution. We do hope to see you there, sincerely. We'd like to see you support the effort of your citizens. If you're not going to be there, I do expect an essay of 40 words or better to my email. At the same time, the city's social media page, and I'll go back that up there, the city hall's social media page, as of late has become a little more whimsical and fun. And I, you know, like anybody, I enjoy lighthearted topics and a little bit of levity. But this kind of comes to a heart. I really don't want to hear about the splash pad one more time, not those two words together, until that is rectified, please. Quite honestly, that should be the subject at heart. We got a long way to go. That's an easy fix, even if it's just a quick zoning amendment and you go back and revisit it. If you need money from me to refund them, $300, come see me, I'll write the check. I think you've got the money. But more importantly, I think you have the talent to rectify this. I'm a little disappointed. I know what you guys are capable of. I have voted for every single one of you, save one. My apologies, maybe your time will come. I expect better. A lot of city of Royal Oak expects better. Please fix this. They have better things to do than be here and ask for a sign. You heard the list of what they perform in this community at no expense or time of yours. Next, I'd like to continue on that subject of the city hall Facebook page. Again, I do like that and I actually, I thank you because now I see that with that, it doesn't need to be just so much informational, it also needs to be influential. I'd like to go back to see some more informational, please. I don't know much more I can say about that. Also, it's come to light to me from looking at past recordings, yes, I have looked at past recordings, I don't have a life of city commission, that the phrase "free of partisan control" has somehow been dropped or eliminated from the swearing in of the oath of office. After looking at appointments and actions as of recently, I actually like to thank you for deleting it because now to me, it seems to be a little more honest and transparent. It might sound a little glib and it might sound a little bit backslapped to your face, but sorry, I think it's kind of the truth. While I'm thrilled to see such vehement and successful recruiting as of late, when we had so many open positions that went unfilled, now we have a plethora. So it seems to me that some extra work, extracurricular work was performed and I thank whoever did that on their efforts. I don't mean to besmirch anybody who is now serving on these appointments, thank you for your offering of service. But the one thing that really made the city stand out to me, you've heard me say we've been, it used to be an honest city, we used to be a humble city, that wasn't it. We used to be a city full of talent and we still are. And I think we're now proving to underutilize our talent. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirscher. All right, who's next? Anyone want to speak tonight? Going once, going twice, okay. Public comment has ended, we're bringing the meeting back up here, which brings us to item number five, approval of the agenda. Commissioner Levasseur?
A couple of things, a very minor correction on the minutes for December 18th, so I'd like to take that off the consent agenda so that we can make that correction. And then also, would like to add two matters with regard to the sidewalk situation. You know, number one, a follow-up with the city engineers to the recent trees that were removed and have him report to us as to whether those were the trees that were identified earlier in the year, when the commission approved the sidewalk installation. That would be number one. And also add to it a request to city staff to provide us the monetary costs for the sidewalk installation still to come and what the city's exposure would be if the courts somehow don't allow us to recoup that from the residents.
Okay. We're going to try something a little different here, Commissioner Levasseur. We actually, at our parliamentary discussion, we understand that we can actually, when we get to the consent agenda, we don't actually have to do it at the approval of the agenda. So we're going to try, moving forward, to be a little stricter with Robert's rules. So that part of your motion, I think, can be, we'll pull that off if you want to do that, it just, we'll do that when we get to the consent agenda. But for the approval of the agenda, we have an agenda in front of us. The proper protocol would be to move for the agenda and then make an amendment to add these elements to the agenda. Can we try that? We're trying to be, might as well, right out of the gate while it's fresh in our mind.
I'm happy to give that a try.
Unless, unless anybody has an issue with the motion the way it's presented right now, because we can do it that way if I don't see any major... Okay, so actually, that's one.
I'm happy to do it, your approach.
You know what, we'll do it this way because I'm not seeing any dissent to your motion right now, any, any major dissent to it. So what we'll do is... So, uh, what we'll do is, uh, um, so, to, to just make sure before someone seconds it, your motion is to move forward with the agenda, but to add a discussion on the, actually, repeat your motion. It was very long, as simple as you can, just so we can make sure we understand it.
Um, add discussion on the removal of trees and how that compares with what was anticipated, uh, through the, uh, reports of city staff when the, uh, commission first approved, uh, the city insta- uh, the sidewalk installation. That'd be one item to add. And the second item to add would be, uh, a discussion of the, uh, potential exposure of the city financially if the courts don't allow us to collect, uh, the cost of sidewalk installation from the residents.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna object to doing it this way. I wanna move the agenda and then do the amendment separately.
Okay, so we'll have to do it that way. Okay, all right. So, is there a motion out there? Commissioner Levaser, with the Robert's rules process.
All right. You're asking me to move to-
Just move for the agenda. Okay, it's move for the agenda.
We just went through this tonight, so it's, we got training wheels on.
Yeah, my apologies, I'm, I'm under the weather, I missed that part of the meeting.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Macy.
And this-
Discussion.
And the motion is?
The motion is to move forward with the agenda.
Now you amend.
He moves the agenda.
And now you want me to amend?
Now he moves to amend.
All right.
One at a time.
One at a time. First motion, uh, to, um, add a discussion of whether or not the trees that were removed recently, uh, were anticipated to be, be removed when the, the commission previously approved the sidewalk installation.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Okay.
Do we handle one motion at a time?
Yeah, we handle one motion at the time, and the only thing that we could discuss at this time is whether or not the item is, we're not discussing, we can't discuss the, um, topic. We can only discuss whether or not the item should be added or not without discussing it, if that makes sense. So, a motion, is there any discussion? Commissioner Dubuck?
Yeah, because the information being sought has already been presented to this commission, is in fact publicly available, much less available to all sitting commissioners, and, um, is not requiring new work to be created by city staff. Uh, any commissioner can request at any given time via email, and staff can send you that information. So, I don't think it's necessary to be added to this agenda, so I'll be voting no.
And I just wanted to-
Commissioner Gibbs, you haven't been called on yet.
I'm sorry.
Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
So, is the city engineer here tonight?
No, he is not. Commissioner Gibbs?
I had a discussion with one of the managers, and I was told that the tree report that the city had was not necessarily complete for trees to be removed, trees that have already been removed from two thousand fifteen forward. So, I think until we have a more complete report, we should at least be able to discuss where we stand with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Well, if we don't have a report and we don't have the city engineer, then I see no point in discussing it.
Commissioner Levaser?
Of course, uh, uh, we, we have to start somewhere, and, and who knows when we're gonna have the city engineer here. So, certainly by putting it on the agenda tonight, we can act upon it and ask for the engineer to provide us with this information at a future date. But certainly, if we simply wait for the engineer to be here to discuss it, we may never discuss this.
All right, not seeing any further discussion. Um, this is a, uh, I'm calling the vote on the amendment, not the motion on the agenda. So, this is just the amendment to add the agenda item to the agenda for the, um, report on the removal of trees, uh, related to the sidewalk installation. So, does everyone understand the vote? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so now we're back to the motion that is on the table, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Levaser?
Uh, for my follow-up motion, uh, to, my motion would be to amend, uh, to ask city staff to provide us a report at the financial exposure that the city faces if the courts don't allow us to pass along the cost of the sidewalk installation pro- program, uh, to the residents.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment.
I'll second that.
We have a second? Discussion? Okay. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No. No.
Okay. Motion fails. That puts the original motion, we're back to the original motion for the approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. This brings us to the consent agenda. And are there any el- does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Commissioner Levaser?
Uh, yes, um, uh, the minutes for December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, I believe, requires a slight, uh, correction.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Does he need a second? I'm sorry.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the remaining consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dubuck, supported by Commissioner Macy. Again, the motion is going to be for the consent agenda, and we're going to be moving out item A to go before item seven. No further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item number A, which is the city commission meeting minutes, December eleventh and eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Commissioner Levaser?
Uh, yeah, with regard to, and, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe it was the last item that dealt with the, uh, uh, the water and sewage line service, uh, insurance that, that residents can purchase. Uh, there, there was a reference there to, uh, asking city staff to, uh, uh, research it to see how many claims we have, how, how many denial claims, things like that. But there's a reference to it also as to, uh, uh, general maintenance. I don't, I don't believe that aspect was, was clear as to what we were asking city staff to do, that we, I'd confirmation from city staff as to whether basic maintenance is, is also included within that contract. And just wanted that clarification, uh, in there, so that, uh, that there was clear direction for, for city staff.
Commissioner Macy?
It's page eight. So, it's in the middle of page eight?
Page eight of the PDF or of the?
Of the, wait. Yeah, of the, of the thing that's linked in our agenda, the PDF.
Yeah, the, the-
Oh, I got it.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, the, the, the paragraph currently reads, "Be it further resolved that routine maintenance is included in the coverage, and what compensation," it should read, "Be it further resolved that, uh, the commission hereby directs staff to determine whether routine maintenance is included in the coverage," and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so you are, are you gonna make that? Okay, so again, and I apologize for everybody watching this and everyone here tonight. We're trying to, uh, follow, uh, the new, or not the new, but Robert's rules. We had a, a session where, um, we got some consulting on what we're doing right, which we're doing a lot right, but there's a couple of things that we're gonna try out to see if we can do better. So, um, again, with this one, we can put the motion on the table, and then we can amend by striking the language, or adding the language, or doing any combination thereof. So, is there a, is there a motion that you're trying to make, Commissioner Levaser?
I, I moved that in the, uh, second full paragraph underneath the entry, "Service Line Warranties of America Discussion," that were, reads, "Be it further resolved that," we insert at that point, "The city commission hereby directs that..."
Staff to determine?
Uh, but between the words "that" and "routine" in, in the pre-existing paragraph.
Okay.
Uh, let, let me, if, if I may correct that. Uh, the, the first line, the, the paragraph should read as, as follows. "Be it further resolved that the city commission hereby directs staff uh, to determine whether routine maintenance is included in the coverage, and what compensation, if any, the city receives for the use of the logo and the mayor's name on the marketing materials."
I don't see any. Sir?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, discussion. Commissioner Dubuck?
Can you hear the precise language? There's just a language change in the minutes as far as the direction given on it. Precisely, is the new language going in?
You're gonna ask me to try to do that again?
I'm sorry. It was minutes, I wanna make sure.
"Be it further resolved that the city commission hereby directs staff to determine whether routine maintenance is included in the coverage, and what compensation, if any, the city receives for the use of the logo and the mayor's name on the marketing materials."
Sounds familiar?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Purush?
Are you moving approval of the minutes with the language change that you just suggested?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be-
We didn't do an amendment on this one, because there was-
It, we're just gonna do, okay, okay, all right. And it has a second.
Ms. House has a, has a comment.
All right, thanks.
Or if, do you want me to put these on the next agenda, already revised? Because I was not here at this meeting? It's up to you.
I have no preference one way or the other. If there's a way that's better, easier for staff, I'm happy to proceed in that fashion.
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts are it might be easier for us to read it, understand it. She can go to the videotape and make sure she captured it, you know, accurately. So, if you're, um-
You're gonna break it back?
Willing to withdraw it, and then maybe make a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes to next, the next meeting, that might work.
All right, I, I would, I would withdraw my, my motion, and so moved that we, uh, table this until the next meeting.
Can you say postpone instead of table?
Post- postpone to the next meeting.
Is there a second out there?
Second there.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Gibbs. So, the motion on the table right now is to postpone the meeting minutes, uh, from our last meeting to the January twenty-second meeting in order to remedy the, and clarify the information related to the sewer warranty, uh, resolution, uh, and the results thereof. Okay, any discussion? Any debate? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes, all right. This brings us to item number seven, resolution honoring volunteer board of education members. So, um, I guess I will, uh, kick this one off. Um, we have Mary Beth Fitzpatrick here tonight. She is, uh, our new superintendent, uh, in our public school district here in Royal Oak. And if you remember, last January, we, um, made a couple of proclamations in a similar fashion, um, showing and honoring our, um, school board for all the work that they do, uh, as well as our, uh, public educators and all the employees that, you know, have dedicated their lives to furthering the advancement of children and, um, and quite frankly, society, uh, because of it. So, um, this resolution we have here is, um, again, in the same vein, uh, but really solidifies our appreciation for the work that our school board members do. I will say tonight, um, uh, that there is, uh, there are competing interests for the, for, uh, some of the school board members. There's a lot of PTA meetings going on tonight, so this meeting wasn't convenient to, to have a broad representation. So, I appreciate, uh, Mary Beth Fitzpatrick for coming out tonight and representing, um, the school board, as well as, uh, uh, the public service, uh, employees and educators. So, um, I'll read the resolution, if there's no objection to that, and then afterwards, I'll look for a motion and we'll, we'll move forward. So, uh, this is a resolution honoring the volunteer, uh, Royal Oak Board of Education, whereas January is School Board Recognition Month, and is therefore a time to salute the work of volunteer school board members and celebrate public education. And whereas community governed public education has been called the backbone of American democracy, and indeed, one of the very foundations of our democratic society. And whereas publicly elected members of the Royal Oak Board of Education ensure that decisions on school programming, properties and facilities represent our community's values, culture, and circumstances. And whereas the school board members in Royal Oak are responsible for the education of approximately five thousand students, providing oversight to a system with an annual budget of fifty-five million dollars and almost five hundred employees. And whereas, under the governance of the Royal Oak Board of Education, schools in Royal Oak are doing extremely well. Student achievement results are strong and trending upward. Budgets are balanced, and enrollment is showing moderate increases. And whereas Deborah Anderson, Carrie Beer, Gary Briggs, Jeff Brinker, Marty Cartomone, Allison Skyes, and Mary Ann Van Hatzma spend countless hours as volunteers, attending committee meetings, serving as liaisons, uh, to the Designated Building and Parent Teacher Association, participating in workshops to stay current on the challenges and opportunities facing schools, and remaining deeply involved in community activities by attending various extracurricular events. So, now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Royal Oak, City Commission expresses appreciation and gratitude to the volunteer members of the Royal Oak School Board of Education for everything they do that makes our schools and the entire community a better place to live. So, that's the resolution. I realize fully that I read the resolution part of it, but I'm gonna need someone else to, uh, make that motion. Commissioner Levaser?
I would move to accept the resolution.
Supported by Commissioner Dubuck. Any discussion? Commissioner Dubuck?
There's things very well said. Uh, like often, uh, folks mistake the city commission as having governance over our school system. We do have a hardworking, independently elected school board, and I think it's appropriate to recognize their service to the community. So, thanks for bringing this forward.
Mr. Purush?
Uh, two things. Uh, first of all, having had, um, children go through the Royal Oak school system and been very happy with and pleased with the, the level of, of expertise and care in the, in the community and in the educational system for years, and, and coming up very closely, grandchildren. Um, but also, with the superintendent here, I don't know if she has anything that she wants to add. I mean, she did, um, she's, it's almost nine o'clock, and she's been here for a while. I don't know if she has anything that she wants to add. As a new superintendent in our community, we certainly, I would think, welcome any comments that she has this evening.
Mr. Macy?
So, maybe she's planning to say this, but I was, I was just gonna say, um, something about the, the, the city school partnership coming up on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and what we have going on there, and so I don't know if she wants to talk more about that. Uh, but I would say that, uh, up until three months ago, right now, I would be at a PTA meeting, um, with, I think Carrie Beer is still assigned to us at Keller Elementary. And the school board and the work they do is very important and, um, makes a difference in our schools, and we can, we can, we feel the imprint, and we, um, we can see them making the hard and good decisions to make sure our students have what they need, and our educators have what they need for us to succeed. So, thank you.
Well, before voting on it, I'll have Ms. Fitzpatrick come up here, if she's willing to say a few words. And thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you. Glad to be here, Mary Beth Fitzpatrick, Superintendent of Schools for Royal Oak. I'm very proud to say that. I joined, uh, the, uh, school board in, um, overseeing our school district in July. Um, I love being in the district, and I will say that working with our board, uh, has been a tremendous professional, uh, boost for me to work with a new set of folks in a new community and get to know them. Uh, so I feel as if we do get to know more of the community through those seven members. Uh, you read a nice list of the things that they do. Um, they contribute, um, both during our meetings and daily in the community as advocates for our parents and our families and students, and so I appreciate working with them. I also appreciate the city taking the time to, uh, consider this resolution and, and passing it on their behalf. We will also be honoring our school board at our January eleventh meeting this week, uh, formally recognizing, uh, we try to do it every month, but certainly during the month of January, um, recognizing the hard work that they do. So, thank you for doing that, and, uh, thank you for putting it, uh, out to our public and our greater community tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I'll just add, I mean, obviously, um, I'm very enthusiastic about our schools. Uh, you know, I'm a father of three children who attend the schools, just like Commissioner Macy has three kids in Royal Oak Public Schools, and Commissioner Kyle Dubuck has three. So, up here, we have nine. We can actually, uh, probably foster a- We can actually probably foster a baseball team if we wanted to, right? It'd be just the right number. So, you know, the school district is integral to the success of the city and I think the city reciprocates to the success of the school district. And it's been a really great partnership. And as far as the leadership from the school board's perspective, you know, I've gotten to know pretty well a number of the school board members. And I gotta tell you, they're just standout people. They've been involved in the community for years. They've never asked for anything in return and their only ambition is to make sure that we have the highest quality education for our kids in this community. And it shows in their attitude and it shows in their work results. So I'm very honored to, and I'll be supporting this resolution because our school board, not only do they work hard, they're just, they're just great people. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes. All right. That brings us to item number eight. In similar fashion, a resolution honoring Royal Oak School District professional educators and support staff. So just like before, I'll read the resolution and then we'll allow for some discussion. And then if Ms. Fitzpatrick wants to come up again and talk about her wonderful employees, we'll afford that opportunity because knowing her, I know she'll jump at the opportunity to say great things about those who work in our public schools. So, resolution honoring the Royal Oak School District professional educators and support staff. Whereas public education is the foundation for a free, prosperous and sustainable democracy. And whereas federal, state and local investment into public education and public educators is essential for our nation to prosper and remain free of tyranny. And whereas the heart and soul of many communities is their public school district. And whereas the heart and soul of public school district are its many dedicated and professional employees. And whereas administrators, teachers and support staff working in Royal Oak Public Schools are highly trained professionals who care deeply about the well-being of each student with whom they work. And whereas Royal Oak citizens are extremely fortunate to have access to an outstanding public school system that provides a top-notch education to the students and families in our community. And whereas high-quality public schools provide personal opportunities for growth and advancement and contribute to the economic vitality of our community in a myriad of ways. And whereas athletics, music, culture and academics are a source made possible by teachers, administrators, support staff and services they provide every day. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Royal Oak City Commission expresses our appreciation and gratitude to our public school employees who help make our community a great place to live, work and raise a family. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I would like to move approval of the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have support by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
I, I think this pretty much says it all. You know, you, you hear about teachers, you know, bringing their own, like spending their own money to bring supplies into classrooms, taking that extra step to make sure kids get a good education. My dad was a teacher. I know what he did in his classrooms. And I, I think our public school teachers are, in many ways, across Michigan, operating at a disadvantage with funding sources being what they are insufficient. And in, in the face of that adversity, still, we have superior schools here in Royal Oak and my hats off to, to those teachers and staff.
Commissioner Perusch?
What she said.
Commissioner Macy?
So we love our teachers and I wanna give a shout out to Mrs. Strong and Mrs. D'Nessa. And my third one's not actually in the public school yet. It's not like I don't like that teacher.
I think your kids are already getting As.
Now they are.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Patrick? And by the way, this resolution is for you as well. Because last time I checked, you're an administrator, correct? I mean, the chief administrator, but nonetheless, an administrator.
Thank you very much. So I will say that this is my 32nd year in public education. We raised two children to go through a K-12 public system and they both graduated from public universities in the state of Michigan as well. My heart and my soul is in public education. I am thrilled to be working with the staff members here in Royal Oak. Two things, the basis for student success is relationships. And so those teachers establish and foster wonderful and caring relationships with all of our students in this community every single day. And it's through the lessons that they provide. It's through the music, the arts, the extracurricular activities and the clubs. It's the whole child that we educate and I'm proud to work with our staff members in Royal Oak that do that. And secondly, a student's success in school is based on the quality of the teacher. There's a lot of things that go into a student's success and being successful in school, but the number one factor has been proven over time to be the quality of the teacher. So our work is to put the highest quality teachers in front of all of the students in Royal Oak every day and I'm proud to say that we're working and doing that. And I'm proud to be working with all of our staff members in Royal Oak as I get to know them in my first year here. So thank you again for this resolution. It's said very beautifully. I will pass along that information to all of our staff, as well as to our school board, and I'm, I'm sure that they send their thanks back for recognizing them as well. And to your point about our Martin Luther King celebration, it is this Monday, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at Berkeley High School. It's that district on the other side of Woodward. That's been our neighbor for several years. It's a, a nice tradition that was started last year by former Superintendent Louis Lakin and we're continuing it again this year. There'll be a short program this year. We're going to be honoring the, the art and work of our children and their interpretation of Martin Luther King's work. So it's a little twist on, on that during the celebration. Then we'll move off to onsite and offsite service projects. And the information is available on the city's website, romi.gov/mok, for anyone who'd like to check it out. So thank you. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Fitzpatrick. Are any further discussion? I'll just shamelessly add, you know, I've been very impressed with all the teachers that my children have had thus far in Royal Oak Public Schools and our interactions with principals and even the janitors have been, always greeted us with a smile, always been very helpful. And I gotta tell you, I think we really have something special going on in our school district here. And like Commissioner Douglas said, you know, public educators, public education has seen some pretty tough times, whether it be, you know, budget issues and/or other attempts to undermine their importance in this state and in this arena. And I think that, you know, showing our appreciation for the hard work that they do is at minimum, you know, what we should be doing for our, for those who have dedicated their lives to public education. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Okay. This brings us to item number nine. Approval of Third Amendment to the Development Agreement for 11 Mile Maxwell Park condominiums. And Mr. Twing, am I gonna hand this one over to you?
Okay. Good evening, mayors, members of the commission. This is the Third Amendment to a development agreement that relates to a project in West 11 Mile and Maxwell Avenue. That development does include three multi-unit buildings. Each of those three buildings includes four residential units. They have started construction on it. What is in front of you this evening is a minor change to their floor plan, building elevation in regards that they wanted to include balconies on each of the units, to the side of the units, which impacted their previously approved setbacks. The setback from Maxwell, the setback from the west property line and then the setbacks between the two buildings. So the, the amendment is only addressing those changes. The Planning Commission did review this at their December 12th meeting and, and did approve the special land use and final site plan with contingencies. One of those contingencies is your approval of this development agreement this evening with that amendment. There is a resolution attached to the commission letter if you so choose to approve the development agreement. The Third Amendment, I should say.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Perusch?
Just to be clear, the only thing that's changing, and this is what you're requesting an approval of, is the fact that the little tiny balconies that are on the side of each one of the buildings, it overlooks that rain gardening type thing, was not on the original site plan that was approved?
No, it was not. None of, none of the balconies were included on their original floor plan. The setback from Maxwell was originally approved at 10 feet. The balconies are four by six, so that setback from Maxwell is reduced to six feet. The distance between the buildings previously was 15 feet. Adding the two balconies reduces that 15-foot setback to, I believe, it's seven feet. And then, and then the setback on the west side adjacent to the YMCA. So it's, it's all related to the balconies that are being proposed off of, I believe, the kitchen area. But no, they were not included on the original plans.
And those balconies face the, the opposing building, as I can tell?
Yeah, they, they face east-west.
Okay, I see the one, I see the ones that are actually facing the street now too. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I'll move approval of the resolution as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? We have second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, as Mr. Twing said, this is a minor change. Yes, it does affect the, the setbacks, but not in any dramatic way. I appreciate the need of the developer to add a feature that's gonna help them rent these places or sell, I'm not, for sale or rent. I don't know, the Planning Commission voted in favor of this and I completely agree because I voted that way too.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Perusch?
The only thing that I would add is because we have this in front of us, it, it allows us to see in their site plan, which, because we're not on the Plan Commission, most of us, we hadn't seen before that they actually have rain gardens in the area between the buildings, which is a nice feature, given the fact that we're cognizant of all of the stormwater issues in the city, that they've included that in their, in their building plan. So it's, it's nice to be able to have that in front of us.
Any other discussion? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, Commissioner Gibbs?
Thank you. I, the balconies are only facing the other buildings. They're not facing the street and they're not facing YMCA or any other building in the area, correct?
On the very east building, it's facing Maxwell. On the very west side, it's facing the Y. And then there are, then there are balconies in between the buildings. There are none facing 11 Mile and there are none to the north.
Okay, all right. That's just, just what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Any other discussion questions? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number 10. Downtown Development Authority Recommendation Regarding Parking Rate Increase. Mr. Twing or Mr. Johnson?
Agenda, was it? Actually, before Mr. Twing starts, I'd like to make a couple of comments just so that everybody understands how parking works in Royal Oak. The automobile parking system in Royal Oak is solely supported by parking fees. There's no taxes going into parking. There is no special assessment. When we build a parking structure, it's being paid for out of fees from that structure and other structures and surface lots and street meters. Cost to create an additional parking space actually nets out to, right now, I'm estimating a little bit over $37,000 per space if you include the land value and net out the lost surface parking spaces. As Mr. Wolf pointed out, we did indeed state, before the Center Street North structure was approved, that an increase was going to be necessary. And the DDA's parking committee did consider doing a special assessment and came to the conclusion they didn't want to do that. They wanted to keep it strictly a fee-based system. Last time we did an increase in permit fees was 2002. 18 years ago. The DDA is aware of the impact on stagecrafters and will consider making it up to stagecrafters by advertising in stagecrafters programs. We can't really continue to use the parking system to subsidize stagecrafters. It actually violates the revenue bond indentures that prohibit us from giving away parking. Essentially, that's what we're doing. Also comment that what you got before you right now is only dealing with permit fees. You will be receiving a recommendation on meter rates as well at a future meeting. The DDA actually received both originally and did not act on the meter rates yet because they wanna see is actually a report that really explains where we are and where we're gonna be with Park Mobile and some other enhancements to the parking system that makes it more consumer-friendly. I'm sorry, Tim, you can go ahead now.
Well, it's okay. I think you covered a lot of the items. The DDA, as, as Mr. Johnson indicated, does serve as the city's parking committee under the parking ordinance for the downtown. So they did look at the initial request that came through Mr. Russell's office. And so we're gonna kinda tandem this, I think, at some point as far as the presentation. The DDA referred the issue of rates and hours and monthly pass fees to a committee of itself. And they did look at several items and met with park rate representatives, as well as Mr. Russell and Mr. Johnson, to go through this. What you see is Attachment 1 was the parking, the subcommittee of the DDA's recommendation to the DDA itself for its December 20th meeting. The DDA in totality looked at those suggested or proposed rates that did look at hourly rates, that did look at monthly passes and did look at other, other fees. At the DDA's meeting though, the DDA simply passed a resolution recommending the city commission increase the monthly permit fees for surface lots in the deck. The DDA is not recommending that you increase the other fees at this time that are included in that list. As Mr. Johnson indicated, they did, they did also, the DDA did also pass other resolutions in, in terms of asking for additional information from staff. They also allocated $9,000 and hired Rich and Associates to do a turnover occupancy analysis to try, trying to determine what are the best hourly rates or hourly limits? Where are the high-demand areas and other things? And there is a meeting scheduled with them to kick that off this Wednesday with one of the DDA committees. So in short, there are other recommendations that I think the DDA will be bringing forward to you in the near future. However, the only recommendation that's, that they're recommending to you this evening is the increase of the monthly rates in the surface lots and in the parking decks. And you can see those on Attachment 1. Real, real briefly, parking lots 1, 2 and 4, which are basically the William Street lots, the one by the, that run north-south out in front of City Hall. They're recommending that those rates increase from $60 a month to $75 a month and that all other lots go from $25 to $45. Again, that's the monthly rate. And that there be no discount for buying multi-month passes. Very similarly, down under the parking garage monthly permits, you can see the increases that are suggested there. Center Street would go from $40 to $50. North Lafayette would go from $35 to $45. South Lafayette would go from $35 to $45. Again, they're recommending that any, any prior special considerations be eliminated and that everyone be brought to those proposed rates. So those are the changes that are in the recommendation from the DDA to the city commission. And again, there is a resolution suggested on the commission letter if you concurred with the DDA. I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Nope. Commissioner Perusch?
If you're ready to have questions?
Yes.
Okay. Under the parking garage monthly permits way at the bottom. Under the parking garage monthly permits, way at the bottom, valet for North Lafayette lot rate, it goes from a dollar monthly rate to $3 a monthly rate. It, can you explain how that operates? Is this pertaining to a valet service and their desire to use designated, or at least some parking spaces within the North Lafayette garage? Do they, is, is that per car? How does, how does that all work?
They pay a, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, they pay, the valet that uses the North Lafayette garage pays a dollar for each vehicle it parks in the garage.
Okay, and that's every vehicle, every night?
Every night, the days they run the valet. Usually, it's a handful of days a month, varies from month, from five to, five to eight days a month, depending on what's going on.
Okay, and then I'm assuming that they just roll that into whatever they charge the customer to valet park their car?
That, that's correct.
Okay, all right. And then, secondly, stagecrafters, it goes from a, a $1 monthly rate to $3 a month? How does that work? Is that per person?
That is per vehicle. The stagecrafters are given validation tickets, and those tickets are presented at, at, as their token when they leave. And stagecrafters is billed a dollar for each one of those tickets that we collect.
So every time they park in the structure, somebody's collecting a ticket? So if they're there every day, for example, in a month, you would?
We would collect 30 tickets if somebody came 30 different days.
Okay, so it's not really a, a $1 monthly permit, it's a $1, it's a $1?
It's a $1 per night, per night.
Per time they park in the structure?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
After, well, it's after, usually after five, most of those volunteers come in the evening and stay, stay during the, during the evening. But, but a normal patron or a normal person using the garage would pay $3.
Okay, but it's, it's, right now, it's still a dollar, no matter what time of day it is?
It's a dollar after 5:00 for the stagecrafters person who uses a voucher.
Okay, and then before 5:00, they can park there free?
They park two hours free, and it's 50 cents an hour.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Macy?
So when I read the recommendation, I, I read it as just being about these monthly permits, and I wasn't even thinking that stagecrafters was part of what we're talking about today. Is it?
Stage, well. Under, under Tim's interpretation, it is not. It's not a monthly permit.
Okay, that was my interpretation as well. And then I have a follow-up for Mr. Johnson. Probably now is not the time to get in deep detail about this, but, so as part of the revenue bond, it's written in there that we can never discount parking at all for anyone, ever?
I think the phrase that's actually in there is that we can't give away parking.
Do two hours for free?
I know.
Commissioner Dubak?
Say a couple of things. With regard to stagecrafters, is it possible to not give away parking for free, but establish a nonprofit rate and have designated nonprofits eligible for that rate?
I think the DDA's proposed solution is superior.
Which is?
That the DDA purchase advertising in the stagecrafters program to provide them with enough money to pay for their parking.
Sounds reasonable. Either way, the question's not before us today, then, right? If this is not a monthly permit?
What is a parking garage?
Yeah, that's, that's my interpretation. The DDA's recommendation to the commission was simply the monthly permits. These are flat rates that are, that are charged on per day.
I want, I want to know a little bit about process. Are we changing anything about what we do, or we just changing the prices? Like, can you get your parking permit online? Can you buy these online?
The garages you can, the surface lots you cannot.
Surface lots you cannot, how come?
That's handled by the Treasury Department.
Okay. I guess, I'll read. I've been told by some business owners that they have a hard time getting the number they need. Do we limit the number each individual business owner has access to? Or is it just whoever comes in first gets as many as they want?
There's a, there's a cap, but they need to know, they only print so many. So if a business comes in late and they've sold everything they've printed for a particular month, based on previous month's demand, there, there could be a shortfall.
And you can buy up to as many months as you like?
Yes, you can. Well, I don't know how many months in advance the treasurer prints out the passes.
Okay, that seems like?
It's because they're printed out, they're printed out monthly, and they say March or April.
Yeah, the other thing that, you know, I've gotten some complaints about is that some business owners feel like they, they have to come back every month to City Hall and reestablish their parking permit, which seems like a terrible waste of time for anybody.
Well, what they're not telling you is they're varying the amount of permits they buy for month to month as well.
Meaning?
So one month they may want 15, the next month they might only want 10.
So they have to come in anyway, because they're, they're changing the number of permits they want?
I'm just saying they're not consistent in the number of permits that they're buying month to month.
I understand that with the time, passage of time, that we need to increase our rates, just because they haven't been raised in so long and we're well, well below market and there's high demand for these lots. I'm just asking, is there anything we're doing to improve the experience or customer service around our parking system?
I, I think part of what the DDA has asked staff to do and want Rich to do is to address the ability for Park Mobile, the ability for, to evaluate where Park Mobile might be implemented and where it should be and shouldn't be, and how it should be, be operated. So that's one of the things the DDA is asking Rich to give them recommendations on over the next few months. They, DDA would like to report by March, and so they, they're kind of put a timeline on, on Rich. And as I said, their first meeting is this Wednesday, and to kind of kick that off and get it started. The DDA's hope there is to improve the experience in the sense of where people can go and get notice. Now, you might not be able to buy more time, but it'll at least tell you on your app that you're out of time.
Sure.
Now, other places you might be able to feed it or put more in, but that's part of the recommendation that's coming, hopefully sometime after March.
I'm totally supportive of the DDA's recommendations that we like a more citywide rollout of Park Mobile or some similar service, and that we expedite the conversion of all remaining coin-operated meters to credit card meters. Particularly, when we're having a conversation about raising the meter rates, I, I think it, we have an obligation, if we're raising prices, to be saying what we're providing for that increased cost. And I think we should be striving to improve the quality of that service. Now, where, in the meter rates, where do the machines that we've installed at the Court Lot and the Sixth Street Lot fall? That, that would be, we'd be increasing those rates as well, correct?
No, we, we, we are not changing the hourly rate.
No, not today. I mean, with the direction the, the DDA has, you're looking at, at, at a few things before we do that. But that would raise those lots as well, correct?
Right. I mean, if, if you, attachment one basically was some of their proposals. And if you look at high-demand surface lots, P1 through P8, or if you look at some of the others, all of those are addressing either the Farmer's Market lots or the other lots that are in town. The lots around the Farmer's Market and the Courthouse are considered P10 and P11. So those are lots that are outside the high-demand area. And under this chart, they would go from either 25 cents before 5:00 hourly to 50 cents before 5:00. After 5:00, they would jump from 50 cents to 75. So it is being looked at, it's just they weren't comfortable with saying that's what it should be yet.
Okay. I got some, before we move forward on this, I want to say, when that does come back, and will the DDA report come to us, when they look at Park Mobile and everything they're provided with? Can that come to us at the same time they get it? That doesn't need a motion, right? We can just make sure we all get that?
Well, you'll, you'll either get it when the DDA gets it, or you'll get it when their recommendation to you comes to you.
I, I'd like to get it as soon as they get it.
As soon as they get it.
Please. Because, again, even with today, raising the, the rates of the, the lots for these passes, I think we need to be figuring out how not just to raise costs, but improve the experience and, and make sure that this is running as efficiently and effectively as possible for people. And certainly, when we talk about the meters, I think there'll be some expectation that we, we're doing it. Because right now, we all know we're very, very good at enforcement. I would like to be as good at everything having to do with parking as we are at enforcement. Like, enforcement is A-plus government service. We're really, really good at it. I want to be that good at every other thing we do with regard to parking. So that I'm, I, I think the, the rate increases for the, the service lots are reasonable, so I'll move for the, the DDA recommendation.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Dubak? Is there a second? Oh, geez. Who's first? Second by Commissioner Macy.
I love raising rates.
All right, we're going to start the discussion here. Commissioner Dubak?
Sure, like I said, I mean, it, it goes without saying that we've, we've been talking about this for a long time, that our, our service lot, the, the passes for these lots are, are well undervalued. They're in super high demand. We haven't raised it in 18 years. So it's justifiable. I do think they should all be able to be purchased online. I think we should be surveying those customers about what we could do to make it a better experience. I think that'd be a very Disney way thing to do, not just raise the prices, but find out how can we also raise the quality of service and that experience for those people, given the demand and given that they're going to see this, this increase. And I think, you know, particularly the business owners who utilize these passes in the downtown are certainly happy to pay more if they feel like they're getting the, the value out of it and that they're, they're seeing changes in how we operate the system in a positive way.
Commissioner Macy?
Agree with Commissioner Dubak. I think, I think the, the rates for the monthly going, going up was probably long overdue. It's been, when I saw this, I was pretty shocked by how cheap it was to get a monthly parking pass here. But I agree that we need to be providing better service. And I'm not even sure we're doing 100% on enforcement, because I think our Park Mobile enforcement is not great. So I think as we raise these rates, we're, we're getting, we're getting increased revenue, and it can't just be because we like to swim in money. It needs to be that we're providing something back to the community for that as well. And it's something we need to talk about as well, as we think about the meters going forward. It's, it's such a hard balance to, to make sure that we're providing the right service, having people, making sure they want to still come downtown and can afford to come downtown, but also incentivizing them to move along once they've completed their business, so we don't have people just sitting in, as was stated today, just sitting in front of their own business all day long and taking up a spot. So this is going to be interesting going forward, but I think this monthly rate is a, is a pretty easy first step, which is why the DDA teed it up for us.
Commissioner Levaser?
I have some additional questions for Mr. Russell. If I'm understanding this correctly, the three lots along Williams would be $75 per month to get a monthly permit. Is that correct?
What was the question again, Commissioner?
The, the three lots along, along Williams, the one by the library, the one here by City Hall, and the one just across the street, those all, all would be $75.
That's correct.
And all other surface lots would be $45 for a monthly permit?
Correct.
And with the exception of the brand-new garage, all the other parking garages would also be $45 per month?
The brand-new garage and the current Center Street garage would go to $50.
Okay, all right.
Because we're treating, it's one rev, it's one entry system, for, we keep, we're saying we're having a brand-new garage, but everybody comes through the same entrance, so everybody needs to pay the same rate.
Okay, all right. Now, now my question is whether we have any anticipated excess capacity in, in the garages during the time, during the day, where, where we may be able to push some of the surface lot monthly permits into the garages, as opposed to having them out on the street where the, or out on the surface lots that may have been used by more casual visitors?
Well, the garages currently are pretty much at past capacity. All three of our current garages. Center Street is currently undersold a little bit, because we've lost some spaces for the construction, and, you know, for the construction equipment and the redesign of the entrance. But we, when the new Ekin building comes online, there's 200 passes that are earmarked for them, so we'll be pretty much up to capacity at that garage as well. Park Right does a good job of managing it. We do sell to a certain number, just, we manage it sort of like the airlines, so we do oversell a little bit, because most of our passes are daily passes, and we do have some residents who buy overnight, who go to work during the day and come home and park in the garage in the evening.
Do we have a timeline for when Ekin will need those passes?
I do not know when that building is coming online. I don't know if you know anything about that?
This new deck?
The new building, the office building.
Oh, Atkins? I, I couldn't tell you for sure. I would assume by sometime next fall.
They're expecting to be open in the spring.
All right, so just, just to clarify, and, and basically, my, my, my question is whether there's additional monthly permits that might be available in the garages. And I'm kind of hearing that probably not, is, is what I'm hearing.
Short, short-term, there will be, when, once we open the, the new portion of the Center Street garage, there will be some additional passes in the Center Street garage in the short term, until we are required to meet our commitment to the Ekin building.
Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I, I will point out, we are disincentivizing people from using, well, the P1, P2, and P4 lots, which are right here, by charging 70, well, you know, raising it to $75 a month, whereas the garages, the maximum is $50 a month. So there is at least a, a market force in play there to push people out of the surface lot and into a garage.
Commissioner Perush?
I just want to understand the motion. I understand the part about the surface lots. When it comes down to the parking garage monthly permits, we're talking about everything that is on the list here, except for the valet and except for stagecrafters. Those two items have been taken out of this motion?
I don't believe they're included in the motion, by the way I read the resolution. Because the resolution states...
The DDA's recommendation, which is what you're acting on, was only for monthly permits.
Right.
And so?
Where we've got daily rates shown, shown on here, those were, were submitted to the DDA. They weren't approved yet by the DDA.
Yeah, just the monthly.
So the, so the increase in fees from $1 to $3, that's not being, that's not under consideration right now?
Not right now.
Okay, I didn't think so. I just wanted to clarify that for everybody who's listening and watching and so on. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'll just throw my two cents in here as well. You know, it's been since 2002, I think, since we last looked at or updated these permit fees. And, you know, some of them, if you go and you look and you take $40 in 2002 and you put it into a CPI inflation calculator, you know, the $40 one should be 54, and we're charging 50. So we're still, you know, pacing less than inflation with a number of these permits. I can't say it for all of them, because I didn't calculate all of them. But parking does cost money, like City Manager Johnson stated. And, you know, it does bring benefit. People want and are clamoring to be in our downtown, and they drive cars. They decide to drive cars. Some take buses, some take, you know, Lyft and Uber, and some walk. But in order to make sure that there's actually something that they can come to, you know, density is important, and you got to build garages, and you got to have surface lots, and they're going to get demand. And so I don't have any issue raising the monthly rates here. I really do think, though, in kind of spinning off what Commissioner Dubak said, I really do think that, and, and maybe I look at it in a slightly different way. Yeah, certainly, we should be offering better surf, better services as it relates to parking if we're raising the rates. But, you know, the complaints that I get typically aren't about what we're charging to park in the downtown, although it does affect some, and everybody has their own complaint, I suppose. But where I see is the convenience, the technology, the people that don't have change, the people that are having a hard time finding parking, the people that just want to, you know, they're willing to pay anything, but, you know, they want to do it on an app or whatever. And I think that's really what we should be, and my recommendation to the DDA is, that's what we should be tackling in conjunction with looking at these rates. So if there's a, you know, rate increase on meters that will help us deploy technology that will make everybody's lives easier, where the burden to coming to downtown is significantly reduced, because you pull your car in and magically you get parking and it's covered, to the extent that we can try to reach that utopia, I think the better. So I agree with Commissioner Dubak, but maybe with a slightly, you know, from a different perspective. So I look forward to see what the DDA is going to come back with. Hopefully, they internalize our feedback, Mr. Johnson. And all of us are free to speak to our opinions, however. to our opinions, however we wish, on social media, whatever we wish to do. Mr. Johnson?
Your feedback pretty much matches the DDA feedback already, so it's nothing new to them.
Even better.
In fact, that's the reason they didn't approve the whole thing, so, already, is they wanted a report back on the app, specifically Park Mobile and our attempts to implement it. It's been difficult. It's given us a lot of problems. But we're trying, and we've gotten some of them resolved.
Yeah, I know enforcement's a big part of it, right? You know, we had Ms. Harrison at Public Comment tonight expressing, you know, the genuine importance of being able to circulate people through our storefronts, to have parking available, et cetera. And if you have folks that are parking there and we can't, you know, they're parking there for eight hours and they should be there for an hour, and, you know, adding another complexity to our parking system, which makes it harder to issue a ticket to get that person out of there, so that storefront doesn't suffer from not having, you know, parking available near its operation, you know, that's an issue too. There's never a perfect solution here, but I think that these are real complications that our police department, our DPS, and everybody have to deal with. But I think they're not unsolvable. You know, there are communities that do this, they do it well, and we can look to them. There are, there's technology out there, and I don't know about how you guys feel, but I'm willing to, I don't know how the DDA feels, but I'm willing to take a shot out there and experiment and do this right, make it perfect. This is something that is perceived as a negative in our community, and it's a ripe opportunity to flip it around and make it a positive. Commissioner Gibbs.
I do have a quick question in the interest of the residents who don't already know. Is the new parking structure across from the post office open yet? Upperable?
Not at this time. We hope to open by the end of the week. We're having trouble passing a couple of our final inspections.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
What he's saying is even our building inspections on ourselves can sometimes be...
Well, I thought I recall getting an email that it was hoped to be open last Friday. And that's why I'm asking, because people are asking me. And I walked by on Saturday morning, and it looked like they were open, but there were no cars out, because it was freezing cold, and I was walking. And, but, so I'm following up on a question from a resident. Thank you.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table right now, and that motion is to approve the recommendation from the DDA for parking garage and surface lot only, monthly only permit changes as presented in the letter. So without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. This brings us to item number eleven, approval of Krieger Klatt professional services contract.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Commission. The request before you is a request to extend our current agreement with Krieger Klatt Architects, who've been working with the city since last year, designing the new standalone City Hall. This current extension would actually put them through schematic design in the construction documents, which is the necessary step that we need to take to bid the project out. They have worked with city staff and department heads, doing interviews throughout most of last year. They held two public engagement meetings to detail their progress, and last month they received site plan approval for this new City Hall. So I don't know if there are any other questions about Krieger Klatt I can answer.
Any questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner LaVassar.
How was Krieger Klatt chosen for this project?
Krieger Klatt was initially working with Central Park Development Group when they were going to design the entire project. They were essentially going to provide a turnkey option for us. In October 2016, the City Commission made the decision to utilize Krieger Klatt's services for our own benefit for the new standalone City Hall, in part because they had already done some work for the Boji Group.
All right, so this was not bid out?
It was not bid out.
It is a professional services contract, which normally would not be bid.
Any other questions for Mr. Fenton? Proposed resolution by staff in this letter. Someone's willing to make a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move the resolution as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas? Is there a second? It's affected by Commissioner Dubach. Commissioner Douglas?
This speaks for itself. We gained the advantage of the Boji Group paying for Krieger Klatt to do a lot of the preliminary work that we would ordinarily have had to pay for. So now we've got a company that is like deeply, already deeply involved in the project. You know, we are gaining advantage of institutional knowledge that somebody else paid for. Furthermore, they're a local firm that does, I mean, we see excellent work by them all over the city. I feel completely comfortable keeping them on board to finish the project they've already started.
Any other discussion? Commissioner LaVassar.
I have some concerns here. Number one, and we all know from the election season, there was a lot of issues with or concerns over how contracts are entered into by the city and whether we're reaching out and giving all entities, all companies, all people who may have an interest and opportunity to step forward and say, hey, I'd like to assist with that project, and I can give you the best deal possible. It doesn't sit well with me that this company, and I've got nothing against this company, that this is being handed to them without the city exploring other options. We're talking about a very significant amount of money. It's five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, but there's provision in the recommendations that if somehow the cost of the project goes higher than anticipated, that our fees to the architects also would rise with the cost of the project overall. And I just see no reason to increase the fee to the architects, simply because construction costs would increase. It's a little bit problematic in that respect. There's other concerns also. You have to recognize that this is a politically connected firm. They made significant campaign contributions during the campaign season. It's not going to come across well to the public in general if we're not putting this out and making this company bid for it against other companies.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Perusch.
The only thing that I would suggest at this point is that if this were not the complicated city-type project that it is, if you were just doing a basic, you know, let's build a building, let's design a building, let's go for site plan approval, let's do construction documents, let's build, all of that work would all be done by the same firm. Rarely, I don't know of a single construction project in the non-government sector where you have, where you split off the design portion of it, which is what this group has been involved in up to this point, from the actual construction documents themselves and going forward, making sure that the project works. It's all done by the same firm. So I think we're being consistent with industry standards here to extend the contract beyond just design into the construction documents themselves, which is what this primarily is. That's the way it is in the private sector, and that's the way it's done in the private sector. It's odd in this situation because of the way that this project has gone forward in the city. First, we were gonna be in the office building, then we weren't, so they were doing preliminary design in the office building, and then it had to be pulled back out, and so on and so forth. This went from a public-private project to just a private office building with the public parts siphoned out. But if this were, if this were just a solely private development, you would have the same design firm that we have here moving from start to finish in terms of design and construction documents. So I don't see anything unusual about this whatsoever. In fact, I think it pretty much conforms to industry standards as to the way things usually go.
Other discussion? Yeah, I'll just add, I'll make a comment on the fee for, you know, if the construction cost goes up. I mean, if the scope of the project changes and things get more costly, the architects have to make adjustments in their drawings, and that's completely tied to a scope change. So that makes complete sense to me and is pretty standard in the industry, that if you're gonna ask your architect to do more work, because your, the project is changing in its scope, driving costs, then that's absolutely, you know, appropriate that they be compensated for the additional work that they have to do. As it relates to why this particular architectural firm, I think Commissioner Perusch, I mean, sums it up for me. This is the firm, a local firm in Royal Oak, started and, you know, has grown their office, a great success story, known across the state for their creativity, professionalism, and, you know, the quality of work product that not only will they be doing for the city of Royal Oak, but for a lot of other premier developers throughout the state. And I think we're pretty lucky to have them in our own backyard, where they can come here to City Hall. They know our building department, they know what it takes to get a project done on time, and as far as their involvement in it. And, you know, so I don't, I mean, by all measures, I think this is the right decision to make, both in terms of practical nature of it, where we're at today, and how we've used them for the continuation of this project, but also because they're a really great firm, and, you know, they're local. We're putting money into our local economy for professional service providers, and I think that's, you know, we have a golden opportunity to do that, again, where all the boxes are checked as far as, you know, the quality of this firm. I think it's the right thing to do, so. Any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number twelve, approval of appointments committee recommendations. And... This has Mr. Johnson's name on it, but I will, I will leave it up to the appointments committee to take this one. Commissioner Perusch?
I was drafted to be chair, so I guess this is the issue that I can summarize for you. There are a lot of appointments of vacancies and reappointments, and this always happens at the beginning of the calendar year, because a lot of terms expire at the end of a previous calendar year. A number of terms for various positions on all of the committees expired at the end of December. Our appointment committee, our appointment ordinance requires, doesn't require, but essentially says that unless the ordinance that creates the committee says otherwise, your term is a three-year term, and you can serve for three, three-year terms, and at which point you are term limited. You could be reappointed after that for yet another term if the commission decides that there is no one else to fill your position, or there is some extraordinary circumstance that makes it important that you be reassigned to that committee. So with that perimeter in mind, those parameters in mind, the three-member appointment committee, which right now is myself and Commissioner Dubach and Commissioner Gibbs, that will switch in a couple of months to the other three commissioners. The mayor never sits on this committee, because he has his own set of appointments and takes care of those. We met and went through all of the applications, all the vacancies, all the reappointments, all the requests for reappointment, and so on and so forth, and came forward with the list in front of you. There are the list of vacancies in front of you, and there are also the list of reappointments for people whose three-year terms are not up, they're not term limited. And there's also four people who we are recommending that they are given a special exemption from the three-term limit, because we feel that they have special expertise and experience required for these boards, and losing them would not be a good thing. There are a couple of committees that had a number of vacancies on them. For example, the Memorial Day Parade Committee had three vacancies, and one long-term member who was term limited, she has served over nine years on the committee, on the Memorial Day Parade Committee. She was one of the original ones appointed. And in terms of the reappointments, there are a number of those people who have done extraordinary, well, they all have done extraordinary work, and we think that they should be allowed to fill out the remainder of their possible three-year, three-year terms. So anyway, so those are our recommendations. And just to get the issue moving forward, I will move approval of the resolution approving all of these vacancies and reappointments. Whoops, I think we have to do them separately. I'll take the first one first. Approve filling the following vacancies, and those are the ten people that you have in front of you. Eleven people.
Support. We have a motion by Commissioner Perusch, seconded by Commissioner Dubach, to fill the vacancy, or to fill the vacancies with the names as it's presented in this letter. Discussion? Commissioner Dubach?
Yeah, I would just add that it's great, the number of applications that we're seeing. We have applications from folks saying, you know, I've lived here for thirty years and never been on a committee, and I really wanna get engaged. And we have applications from people saying they've lived here for two years, and they wanna really dig into their new community and find a way to serve. And there's, you know, a variety of people applying for all these vacant positions. It's awesome to see residents getting enthusiastic about serving the city.
Commissioner LaVassar?
I've got a couple of questions, one with regard to Carol Hennessy. I note four, four positions on the Memorial Day Parade that are being filled here among the vacancies, and I presume that that's who Commissioner Perusch was referring to has been on the Memorial Day Parade for quite some time. I'm simply wondering how she's perceived differently than the four people that are being recommended for reappointments, though they would otherwise be term limited. It would seem to me that she's incredibly valuable part of that Memorial Day Parade Committee, and I would just see her as a critical component of that committee.
I will just speak for myself, and the other members of the committee can speak. The Memorial Day Parade Committee is certainly probably one of the most important committees in terms of logistics and being able to handle an event in the community. And so what you need to find and make sure that you have in place are people who, number one, understand that this is what you are working on. You're working on an event, it's a one-time-a-year thing. It's not like the zoning board of appeals. But on the other hand, it's a committee that has to be able to work logistically with large groups of people for that one event. And we have, in front of us, we have two people who have been not only community organizers, but very involved with a lot of community events in the community over time. We have another person proposed to fill one of the vacancies, who is actually a member of the Canadian Legion, which is one of the members of the body that the ordinance requires or suggests that we pull a membership from. And then we also have a veteran, a fairly recent veteran. And so it seems to me that in terms of the, let's make an exception to the general rule of you're term limited and you're out, you need to be able to find and be sure that you find people who not only can manage an event, but also are pulled from the groups that the ordinance suggests that you pull a membership from. And I think with these four people, we've got it. So with all due respect to the time that Mrs. Hennessy has put into this project, I really think that we have four people here who are qualified to carry on this role in a very honorable way and to do a terrific job.
Did you... Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I'll just, I do believe that Carlo Jagani continues his service on this, no?
No.
Okay.
No, he was one of the vacancies that was created. So we've got three vacancies from people who said, we're done, we're gone, or they were done and gone a long time ago.
Okay.
And then we have a term-limited person, so there's four spots.
Anybody else? Commissioner LaVassar?
Commissioner Lavasser?
Of these four, four people, and you mentioned that one's a veteran and another is, I believe you've mentioned from the Royal Canadian Legion.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give me the breakdown as to which, which groups each of these individuals represents?
Sure. Patricia Brown is either vice president or current president of the Royal Optimist Club, which has staged and been involved in a number of community events. They also have been a longtime parade participant. Patricia Dunston has been involved in, I don't know how many, different community organizations. She's a, was Citizen of the Year in 2008. She's a member of the Historical Society, which is another one of those organizations that the ordinance suggests that we pull a membership from. I had forgotten to mention that prior. If anybody can organize anything, it's Patty Dunston. Eileen Harmon is the person from the Canadian Legion, and David London is a fairly recent veteran of the U.S. Army, I believe.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Lavasser?
Yeah, now I want to turn now to Rick Karlowski in the Historical Commission. What was the basis for not reappointing him to the, to his role on the Historical Commission?
I can again only speak for myself. We had lots and lot, we have probably more applications for the Historical Commission than any other commission or committee, perhaps with the exception of the Parks and Rec Board. They were in kind of neck and neck in terms of the number of applications that we get for both. And I think it's important to have as much new representation as we can when we have the opportunity to give people an opportunity to serve. And this was one of those instances where I thought because of the number of Historical Commission applications we had in front of us, that it was an opportunity to, to put in a new member. Mr. Karlowski has served well on that committee for six years, and I think that having a new person on the commission is an appropriate thing at this time. That's my personal view. I can understand why there might be differences of opinion even from the own, my own committee members here. But that's just my personal view.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Lavasser?
Was, was the criteria for reappointment as set forth in the Appointment, Appointments Ordinance, was that considered? And if we need to, I would ask our city attorney if he could provide us with information on that. I believe it's section 12-7.
Commissioner Lavasser, what was your question? Who, you asked a question to the, to Commissioner Perush, who is chairing the Appointments Committee?
Yeah, I guess I would go first to our city attorney and ask if he could recite to a section 12-7 of the Appointments Ordinance.
The ordinance sets forward the criteria for reappointment to advisory boards, commissions, and committees as listed, A, attendance of meetings, B, length of service, C, special expertise required by the Border Commission, D, recommendations from other members of the Border Commission and/or city commissioners, and E, the opportunity for allowing new people to serve on a border commission.
I went for E. But that's just me.
All right, and following up with that, does section 12-8 discuss what the protocol is if someone is not going to be recommended for a reappointment?
Commissioner Lavasser, I'm going to allow you to ask this last question, but I just want to make sure we understand that questioning the city attorney on items in here and reading them is not germane to the topic we're discussing. Those are questions that can be answered outside here prior to the meeting, so I just want to make sure we stay productive here. So I'll allow you to ask that last question as far as the line of questioning.
Well, I guess to summarize, 12.8, it does provide the procedure for reappointment. If in the judgment of the committee, that is, the Appointments Committee, the Border Commission member should be reappointed for another term, the members to be contacted to see if he or she is interested. If he or she is interested, the committee may recommend to the city commission the member's name for reappointment. On the other hand, if in the judgment of the committee, the member should not be reappointed, the city commission shall be notified and shall receive a brief explanation as to why the member should not be reappointed. The person who would then not be reappointed is to be notified by the committee, and the committee shall then make a recommendation for the vacancy from applicants. And it goes on to talk about the process the commission should follow in acting on the recommendation from the committee.
My understanding of that, and particularly section C, is that there's a somewhat of an expectation that if someone's doing a good job, that they're going to be reappointed. And if they're not going to be reappointed, that that decision be first made, and they be notified of that. And then you take the next steps and you, you make a recommendation as to who should fill that role. That doesn't seem to be what's going on here. And I'm certain that I will hear statements saying that this is not the case, but with the removal of both Carol Hennessy and Rick Karlowski, it certainly seems extremely political.
Commissioner Lavasser, that sort of speculation is not appropriate for this body.
I will disagree with you in that regard. It's a situation where we have the opportunity here after a very challenging election season to try to bring the community together. And that means welcoming people of various perspectives. And here we seem to be taking a very different approach and basically saying, people that didn't support our candidates, you're not welcome in our committees. And I have a problem with that.
Commissioner Lavasser, you're speculating to the intent of another commissioner, which isn't allowed in our rules. Okay?
I've spoken my piece.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Perush?
The only thing that I would suggest, that there are a number of people both serving on our committees and who are recommending for reappointment, and I'm not going to name names, who certainly did not fall behind the winning team in the election season. So, you know, the fact that we're, you know, settling political scores here is, is not the case. Mrs. Hennessy served three good terms. She is not subject to reappointment unless she is given a special exception. And the special exception rules, you understand. And in the committee's view, at least the majority of the committee's view, she did not merit a special exception to that pretty hard and fast term limited rule because we have qualified people who are willing and able to step into that position and carry the ball forward. Political considerations aside, the term limited rule is, is pretty harsh. We've lost a number of people due to term limits this year. There was someone who was term limited off the library board who played exemplaries, gave exemplary service to the library board. And there's a couple of others here. Term limits are term limits. And unless you could describe a situation whereby that, that person's, as this body has said, and I think as you, Commissioner Lavasser, have said on many occasions, no one is irreplaceable. In this situation, we really think that those four positions that are open on the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and it is an open position, it's not a reappointment, it's an open position because of term limits. There are four qualified people willing and able to serve and fill those positions.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
I think Commissioner Perush said it well. I think that the allegations are verifiably false. And I'm frankly a little disappointed. This is the second time today that a commissioner at this table has brought November mudslinging to this body, and I think it's beneath, beneath our decorum of this room.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Gibbs?
I am going to sidestep that previous discussion, and I do want to ask why Patricia Brown has a term limit ending in 2018 and the rest are 20. I don't recall that from the, and I'm on the committee, so I'm on, I'm on the Appointments Committee. I don't recall that from before. But she's up for...
May I? Carlo Ginati resigned.
Oh, that's right.
So that's Carlo's, the remainder of his term.
A remainder of his term. Okay, thank you. That slipped my mind. Thank, I knew somebody had resigned, didn't I? Thank you.
Without any further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes.
The next resolution is approving the following reappointments to a number of committees in the community. I will move approval of those reappointments.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Commissioner Macy? Discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item number 13 confirmation.
No, there's one more resolution.
Is there one more? Oh, we have the third set. I missed it on my...
I'll move approval of the resolution approving the following reappointments, recognizing that they are currently term limited. However, the special expertise and experience required for these boards and committees make it inherent that they remain in place.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Perush. Seconded by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion? Commissioner Perush?
The only thing that I would suggest is that, and you all know this, is that because of the very specific, very detailed, and in many cases, a lot of outside expertise is required to provide service to any one of these boards that is listed here, having them reappointed, I think, is very valuable, especially in terms of the historic district work. That's such detail that takes such specific expertise that losing any of these people, I think, would be a shame. And I don't think that they would, it would be, I don't think it would be replaceable. Let's put it that way.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I wish all our new committee members in this great city good luck in their new assignments if they're watching tonight, and we look forward to your service. All right, now that brings us to item number 13, the mayoral appointments to the commission of the arts. And as you can see here in the letter, that certainly I'm going to be reappointing Jody Ellison, Jason Gittinger, and Denise Reske, and a newcomer here, Alicia Baseline. And I think these are all great picks, great resumes, highly enthusiastic about art, and especially for the reappointments. I mean, the proof is in the pudding. They've done great work. They've taken, I think, quite personally, we do a lot of task force committees, things like that. When we formed this one, they far exceeded expectations, and a lot of it has to do with the work of the folks that are being reappointed, recommended for reappointment in this letter. And of course, Alicia, I think, will bring a tremendous knowledge with her experience and some hands-on experience to meet the committee and bring some new ideas, or the commission for the arts even better. So that's why I appointed these, and reappointed these folks, and, you know, we'll entertain a motion if anyone wishes to make one. Commissioner Dubbuck?
So moved?
So moved. Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of Royal Oak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, supported by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.